Okay, next public hearing will open on the tiny house renewal topic. Mr. Suckler, please take it away.
Yes, I want to ensure that the commissioners all received their packets. It had three attachments. There were no public comments received to date. This matter comes before the planning commission for consideration for recommendation to the city council. The proposed revisions that are to be considered tonight in public hearing will allow for up to three successive one-year-long renewals beyond the currently allowed maximum of two years. This could allow potentially, if all conditions were met and all requirements were met, the approval of up to five years for a tiny house encampment and only that type of temporary encampment at a specific site. Each renewal would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis based on criteria contained in the ordinance, and they're not automatic. This is one where there would be a process. It would be considered, and should it meet a set of criteria, it could be extended. The review would be performance-based and evaluate both compliance with the conditions of approval. And for encampments that are located on city-owned land and/or receiving funding support from the city must meet performance standards for placing residents into permanent housing. I should take a moment here and note that we don't propose the specific standards because based on the populations, and they vary, you'd have different metrics you'd wish to use, and they would be accommodated in the license agreement that's executed between the operator and the city for the use of the site. The proposed ordinance is a non-project action, and it would not in itself approve the renewal of any existing or proposed tiny home encampment. Rather, it merely establishes a process and criteria to evaluate such renewals. So the backstory on this is that in 2018, the city council adopted land use regulations to address temporary encampments in order to ensure that there were safer living spaces for people who are in shelter. Unfortunately, we're not able to build housing fast enough using our levy to accommodate all the folks who are in shelter, and some need an alternative to living on the street. In looking at the approvals that were done back then, they included temporary safe parking areas, temporary tent encampments, temporary tiny house encampments, and temporary building encampments. The temporary tiny house encampments had a longer term than most, and the reason for that is they require more infrastructure and time as well of expense to set up because they require structures to accommodate folks and are not easily transportable. At the point when these were set up, the approval allows currently between 90 days and up to two years, provided the sponsor and managing agency comply with all of the permit conditions. Should the original permit be granted for a period of less than two years, there was an opportunity for extension up to a total of two years. In looking at the number of times the ordinance has been applied within the city, there are two active approved temporary tiny house encampments. One is Swift Haven at Civic Field, and the other is Unity Village at Post Point. A third temporary tiny house encampment, Garden View, is proposed to be constructed, and I should say under construction now, at the Clean Green Site on U Street. In fulfilling these, facilitating these encampments and working with the proponents, it's become clear they represent a substantial upfront cost to the city to prepare the sites, and a longer term would help address the cost per resident served. Additionally, if a proposal is successful in placement, and if they meet all of the approval criteria in terms of their conditions of approval, it would be in the public interest to use that mechanism to get as many people placed in permanent housing as possible. The appropriate metric, as I mentioned, will be established based on an individual case-by-case basis, depending on the nature of the population and how for the site and included in the license. I should note the city of Seattle, for its 13 soon-to-be-15 units, has a general rule of thumb of 40% placement within a year, and they have criterions that define what placement means. As in the last matter and all matters this evening, this is a Type 6 review. It comes before the planning commission for public hearing. The planning commission will consider public comment, review the record, and make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will notice a public hearing and will take comment itself again, and then ultimately make a decision, either approving the change or denying the change. They certainly could modify it as you can from the draft that's proposed today. The key issue before you this evening is, is allowing a longer term for only temporary tiny house encampments in the public interest if they are meeting or exceeding all performance standards that are established in the license agreement? And we have not received any public comments to date, and the staff recommendation proposes a mechanism where a permit for a temporary tiny house encampment may be renewed for an additional one-year terms, and that's up to three consecutive one-year terms from an additional two-year approval. If a request for the approval is received no less than 60 days prior to expiration date of the approved permit, requests for renewal shall be accompanied by a revised operations plan talking about the longer term that will be in effect during the permanent renewal period in system requirements of Section 201502OP of the municipal code. The cabinet is compliant with the requirements of this chapter. Temporary encampments are located on city-owned land and/or that receive funding for the study shall ensure client data is entered into the homeless management intake system. And I should clarify, that doesn't mean they have to accept referrals from the homeless intake system or management system, but they, homeless service center, excuse me, but they would be registered so we can, in a sense, try to focus our social service partners on helping individuals and identify where they are in coordination and comply with the performance standards for housing placement in the approved license agreement and/or service agreements for the program or site. Now, a couple of comments on this. You might hear that we shouldn't have any time limit whatsoever. If we do that, these are no longer temporary uses, and they would need to comply with all of our building code, health code, and safety requirements, which none of these encampments do. The temporary tiny homes we have are basically considered by the code as tents with walls. They are not habitable for long terms. They are meant as a stopgap until permanent housing is available and not as destination onto itself. Nonetheless, both Seattle and other cities have seen success with this model. As proponents will say, and we have observed, they get people off the street. They get them a place to stay, a safe place to stay. They give them generally a supportive community. They access them to services, and if successful, we see folks placed into a permanent housing environment, and that's the end result of it. Having these as a destination onto itself is merely warehousing people in substandard housing, and that is inconsistent with our laws and our approved plans. I'd be happy to answer any questions the planning commission might have at this time. I also ask to respond to any of the issues that are raised in public comment as you begin your discussion. Thank you.
I had one quick question. My recollection of when this went through the planning commission originally was that the tiny home villages had a shorter duration, something like six months to a year. The first tiny home was at City Hall, and then Sunnyland, and then Fairhaven, and those were all pretty short durations. Did that get changed from the original at some point in the last year, couple of years?
So what I said, it was altered by the city council up to two years. However, we had proponents who didn't have a track record. They had never really established a facility, and in their subsequent uses, the competence interval of their management skills and the efficacy of their programs were demonstrated, and each successive approval allowed for a longer term. And the reason we had the flexibility is that, as you review the standards, you have to have a fairly good competence interval that the program will be successful, that the rules could be enforced, that folks would get placed because it's public safety. It's critical. So as the director, I approve those permits, and as applicants became more more of a track record was developed, we extended the term, and that's why they had longer. At this point, the applicant homes now has demonstrated a high degree of competence in running the facilities, and we feel fairly confident to go to the maximum turn on the initial approval absent some compelling reason raised during the permitting process.
Okay, thanks. That context helps line up my memory and how we got to today. Another commissioner clarifying questions before we jump into the public. Rose?
Yeah, I think Jed also raised his hand, but I just wanted to get an understanding. There's temporary tiny house encampments, and then you also have temporary building camp and building encampments. Can you just talk a little bit about what the difference is between the two?
If I might, I'll just go through all four. The temporary safe parking and temporary tent encampments are, again, 90 days, and the reason is both are outside, subject to weather, somewhat problematic because of the lack of permanent facilities and more difficult to operate. The temporary tiny house encampments I mentioned and the temporary encampments in the building, those are using an existing building where you might be able to use a storefront for a period of time. There is a nuance on that in that there's a provision in state law for temporary encampments in the building by a religious organization that preempts much of our rules. So if a church had a storefront and went to operate an encampment inside that storefront, we can only condition it for public health and safety. If a not-for-profit, a nonreligious entity, we can condition it using our permitting process. Did I help explain the differences? And I think, you know, I would note our two tiny house encampments are good examples of more established infrastructure able to deal with the vagaries of the weather, where a tent encampment, one we had initially behind City Hall, was subject to, when it snowed, it failed, unfortunately.
Jed?
Yeah, I was curious about the, I guess I have a couple of questions. First is, since it doesn't follow building codes in terms of how these are designed, I'm curious, like, it seems like one of the issues could be site-specific, and how do you determine the maximum population or size of the encampment? And then the other question that I have is related to the timeframe of like maximum of five years for the tiny home, if they can renew it. Seems like that the neighborhood and the people who live in probably what are some like typical residential areas would be the ones who may have the concern about their resale value and their property values, and just curious about the five-year term versus other measures of time. How you considered that limit on the duration?
Okay, that's a good point. First, to the building code, these are exceptions. However, the requirement is that they're all inspected to ensure they're safe by both fire marshal and building official. And they have a prototype design that's approved to ensure that's compliance, and there's limitations. There's no cooking, there's no open flames, very limited use inside to make it safe. And we modeled what other cities on the West Coast have used in tiny homes for that policy. Now on to the extension and the effective surrounding property. We should say from observation, we have not seen any of the concerns that were raised in any of the permitting processes from these approved homes to tiny encampments manifest in the surrounding neighborhoods. We've seen actually, based on strict review of data, a decrease in quant because the residents of the tiny homes are eyes on the street, and actually, they deter others from coming into the area. This is a temporary use, and temporary use will extinguish. There would be no exception beyond the five-year period. However, this is one where you need to raise the potential adverse effect on the surrounding neighbor with the temporary nature and the benefit to the community. If a tiny home village is placing, let's say upwards of 40% of the residents every year into permanent housing, that's getting people out of homelessness, and that's producing impacts all over our city. We have in the past conditioned for screening, we've conditioned for fences, we've done a number of things that the code requires to try to make it more compatible with surrounding properties. But again, it is a use that does raise significant concern. I don't want to diminish that for neighbors, and each one is considered. By approving this process, it does not guarantee that a use would be there for five years, nor that it would be granted for five years. If it's not able to meet all its conditions of approval, if there are problems, it would be extinguished. And we also have revisions in the code that eliminate the use completely if they're not able to follow the rules, not waiting for two years to pass. We've not had to do that, but we do have the ability to do so.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. If there's no other questions. What's that?
I can't find my Zoom raised hand, so.
Sure, go ahead.
Are there any other applications out there for more sites other than the one that you're saying, such a construction? And if not, are you seeing any organizations looking at finding another site?
So one of the tiny home villages at Civic Field, Swift Haven, was established under an emergency declaration this past winter, and it is one that we will need to relocate. It was never fully intended to stay there for a great length of time. It likely would seek another location and would have to go through permitting, but it wouldn't be a new one. It would just be moving to a different location. Similarly, Unity Village down in Fairhaven by Post Point, its approval was extended to the end of the COVID emergency plus a period of time to allow for relocation. So they would likely need to look for a new site. We have no additional site pending. We have reviewed and have issued approval for the Garden View site, and it's under construction. So nothing in the wings. However, two of the ultimately three tiny homes might need to relocate in the near future.
Thank you. This may be a little lengthy of a answer, but what are the conditions around the, any possible sites?
They're allowed in public zones, and the conditions are quite lengthy. A typical approval might have as many as 45 conditions of approval. They address operation, they address noise, trash, congregation, how admission is. In essence, we don't allow folks to just walk up and hang out outside trying to get in as residents. It's off-site screening and brought to the site itself. We talked about the proposals, all of our proposals basically are to not allow for illegal drugs or alcohol use, and we have a process so that folks who are not consistent with the rules are no longer welcome at these uses and asked to leave. So it's pretty rigorous. It is a series of conditions that are practical, and to be fair, we found good success at the previous sites and the current sites and their application. Now again, we've not seen off-site or surrounding site impacts from these uses.
Thank you. Any other hands? Okay. Let's open up the public testimony on tiny home encampments. Members of the public who wish to speak on this topic, please use Zoom, raise your hand.
Go ahead, Marlo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. My name is Marlo Jaegel. I am a longtime Bellingham resident. I went to Western in 95 to 97, as well as 2004 to 2006. I've been a resident since 2013 until current. I'm a native Washingtonian as well. I come from Walla Walla. I moved into the tiny home community in March, and I would just like to make a couple of comments about Swift Haven and the tiny homes that I reside in. So the difference between base camp versus a tiny home. I have stayed at the Lighthouse Mission, and I praise everything that they do there. They were very kind to me. However, the tiny home community has the ability for someone to basically have privacy and maintain their mental health and the ability to either continue or establish a job where they can get permanent housing a lot quicker than if they are at base camp dealing with many people. It does become exhausting. It's much easier to do it in a tiny home, as well as I think the model is flexible enough for people in different circumstances, including single people, those who are in disability, those who are in families. I think it is a model that can work to bridge the gap between homelessness and private residence. And that's what I would like to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlo. Go ahead, Douglas.
Do you guys hear me?
Hello?
Do you guys hear me?
Hi, are you talking to me? Sorry.
No.
I'm not sure how this works, really.
I, that's.
If you'd like to make a comment.
My name is Jamie Johns, and I just wanted to make, I've been here at Swift Haven for about two months. I do not qualify for any list with Opportunity Council. I'm not on disability. There was nowhere for me to go really other than base camp, and it's really hard to, I've been down there, it just seems like it would be very hard to feasibly continue my life there. And I just want to point out that the reason I'm in this position is until the rent prices go down, until requirements from landlords are a little bit lightened. You know, I don't have terribly horrible credit. I don't have a huge extensive criminal background, but I also don't qualify for lists, and until those things change, I'm kind of stuck in a position where this is it. I worked full-time and could not afford on my own anything in the rental bracket. I didn't qualify for rooms to rent due to either my dog or, for some reason, it's not considered discrimination for someone to be over 20s, not in their college, but I was denied rooms for rent because I wasn't in my 20s going to college and wasn't fitting for those aspects. So I just kind of want to point that out, that until some things relieve in Watcom County to make it a feasible way to actually progress as a single functioning adult, these kind of places are pretty much necessary, or we're going to have tents all over the city making a much bigger mess. So I guess that's about all I really have to pitch in on that because I'm quite new to this system. But, you know, I just want to make sure that I point that out. That's the position I found myself in. And that's really all I had to say on this because I'm kind of new to this.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Virginia.
Ha, thank you. Hi, my name's Virginia. You might be noticing now that I'm making a habit of attending this meeting on a weekly basis, but it's because I care about all these things. I want to just very enthusiastically give my support to the Homes Now organization and the tiny homes. My sister has owned a house in the Leonard Streets on E and Irving, behind the middle school there for 15 years, and it is on the path, the walking path for getting to the Lighthouse Mission down there on F Street. And the theft that has occurred there is consistent, like bicycles, strollers, anything that can be used to carry things. So it's setting. I would much rather live, have a tiny home community in my neighborhood than a shelter because obviously shelters are not succeeding. They're not effectively serving the needs. What people need is a small room to themselves with a locking door, and they need a little community. One of the reasons why tiny home communities are so successful is, A, not only do they provide people that an effective shelter where they can have a space to themselves, but they also provide people community to plug into, which is a huge factor of human health and well-being and healing. So please do anything and everything to support tiny house communities in Bellingham.
Thank you, Virginia.
Yeah.
Any other hands for public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will close the public testimony on the, oh, let's keep it on for one second. We got one more.
Go ahead, Tina.
I'm Tina. I'm from Unity Village. I'm one of the managers over here, and I want to thank you all for being here for us tonight and giving us this opportunity to try to better our community. Homes Now has done so much for our town in this last two years. I've worked with this program since day one, and if it wasn't for this program, I know the whole group of people from here and quite a few over at Swift now that have come from over here that wouldn't be achieving very well in their lives. And I've literally watched people get sober through our program. I've watched them get housing through our program. I've watched people just blossom out of the closed people that they were, that they couldn't even communicate and get the help that they needed. And now they're finding that confidence back in themselves because of this program and how well it's worked for the ones here in Watcom County and myself. I was supposed to be here for a short time, and it's turned into two years due to many circumstances and our housing problems here in Watcom County. But I'm boasting here about Homes Now for the fact of the matter. I have been on the front line of this, and I have done outreach, and I have done the tent encampments, and I have done on the side of the street. I have lived in my car. I've lived at the Y. I've lived in all these organizations that I have found that didn't work. I've been assaulted in those places physically, emotionally, mentally. It made my own illness, and I have a very serious muscle disorder. And so when I'm too upset, my muscles attack, and then I can't move, and that's very hard for me. So going to a place like Base Camp or the Mission at that time, or, you know, any of those programs like that didn't work for me. So they put me in other places of hope and help, and they didn't quite cut to the chase of what Homes Now has. Homes Now and Unity Village and Swift and Winter Haven and up at Sunnyland, that has made a difference in people's lives. Yeah, we need running water still that is normal in normal facilities, but you know, what we have here is a community. We have a beautiful group of people, and I want to keep it growing, and I want to see this program succeed and move forward. And we don't, we, moving is just going to make more tragedy in people's life. Every time you pick up and you have to move, that's one more day off of their mental health that it really messes with them. So with all I can say is, thank you for everything that you guys do, and please give us one more extension on this. We all need a home, and that's what this program's about, is housing people, one home, one person at a time. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you, Tina.
Any other hands for public comments? Okay, let's go ahead and close public testimony on this topic, and we will move into commissioner discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Yeah, I just wanted to thank, um, all the city staff for all the work that they did to put this ordinance together and to help create this opportunity. Um, I think mimicking what, um, some of the folks said here is that it's an important stepping stone and that we need all kinds of options. So, um, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of extending the period for, um, more extensions and appreciate the work that went in to really make sure that we have, um, the right kind of measures in place, uh, to monitor and make sure things are going well.
That's Rose. Um, yeah, I want to echo that and, um, uh, you know, we've, we've, we've put this, um, tiny temporary encampment, the, the, the package of four together a few years ago and at the time, um, it was new and, and the thinking was, at least, um, when we were talking about it, was that six-month window um, with, with some extension. Um, the idea was to, to move it around the city and let all neighborhoods share in the, um, supporting of, of meeting this, this need on an emergency or temporary basis. Um, and as, as Rick spoke to, there, there wasn't a precedent in, in town and, and a track record of organizations doing this and existing organizations with track records, I don't think we're interested. A lot has changed in three years. Um, we, we now have organizations with track records. Uh, we have seen this. We have seen neighborhoods, um, react initially to what is before them as, as you would imagine, when, when you haven't seen something like this before. Um, and as, as Rick mentioned again, that there, we now have evidence of what it looks like when you put all these conditions in place and run it, um, for, for quite some time. And then, and the, the data shows, um, the impacts are not, are not what, what, um, anyone feared. So, um, I, I was thinking a bit about that kind of moving it around, sharing, all, all neighborhoods sharing and, and, um, serving this, this need. Um, but I think with the infrastructure required, this makes a lot of sense. Um, and I'm, I'm definitely supportive of the, the three one-year extensions. Um, and I think how we're thinking about the performance based, um, uh, it is, any concerns that a neighborhood or immediate neighbors would have about, um, sharing that, that, um, servicing that need for, for a longer period of time than we initially thought about. I think it's, is offset by, um, seeing people graduating through the program and transitioning into some um, other form of housing. So that, that is, this is a piece of the solution and that, that warrants, um, these extensions, which I'm. Holly?
Thanks, Mike. Um, I would just, yeah, I would support both your and Rose's comments. Um, and, uh, believe that, um, that this housing affordability issue affects so many different demographics and this is just like one part of it. And so, um, we need all of these resources. We need the shelter resources which serve a different population. Um, people at different point in their life. We need this. Um, and I'm like, I agree with you that, you know, we, we worked through the original ordinance. We didn't really know what, how it would fit, but I think time has shown that it's been working fine. Um, and the absence of testimony in opposition to this is, is some evidence of that. Um, and I would say, um, that I also support the three one-year extensions. I do think having some backend cap is appropriate because as Rick mentioned, this is not a permanent use. And there's a different section of code that we adopted and worked through for permanent, um, facilities. And when you have a permanent facility, you need to provide maybe more robust, um, health and safety facilities. And so, um, I, I definitely support that longer term, five years, but, uh, also believe that there needs to be a backend cap. So I think it's well drafted. Um, I did have one question. Um, there's reference in the staff report and in the ordinance whereas section to, um, organizations that show, uh, like some metric of, or some, some level of success in moving people through the encampments is necessary, but then there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance language regarding that that I could find. Like there's no metric for that. And so I'm wondering, and I don't necessarily think there needs to be one, but I was, it's a question for staff is we specifically talk about that component, how Seattle did that and then in the whereas is, but we don't have anything in the ordinance. And is there a reason, um, why we chose not to do that? Or maybe I missed it somewhere.
If I might respond to that, um, we do, um, have it, but it's not in the ordinance. In essence, we have, uh, the framework for it. It says, um, on, uh, page, uh, nine, well, I think it's nineteen, uh, two of the ordinance. Um, the, uh, number three temporary camps are located on city-owned land and/or that receive funding from the city. Shall ensure client that is entered in homeless, uh, management intake system in coordination with the service center. And here's where it comes to comply with the performance standards for housing placement in the approved license agreement.
Okay.
License agreement. And the reason was we couldn't come up with a standard metric that would fit all populations.
Gotcha.
Um, if you have, uh, geriatric, uh, folks, uh, folks who are older who are homeless, it may be a different number compared to those who are youth, um, or just sort of, uh, general population. Um, what I can say is Seattle's, um, number has been 40% on the average. And again, they changed that based on populations. Um, and, uh, existing providers in Seattle have been placing, um, upwards of 47 to 50, uh, so I think 54%. That's my recollection of folks. So we'll work with them. We'll look at the population. We'll seek what, uh, the target would be. And, um, we, we want, we want these uses to succeed and we don't want us to borrow the can't be met based on the population that we're going to have, the, the residents.
Thank you, Rick. That's a great explanation. Um, and now looking at that in, with the context, it makes sense how you're handling it. Thanks.
Um, I want to expand on that, um, that comply with performance standards. Is that a subjective decision by the director? And is that, if, if you set out in the license agreement and you said 40% and they're at 39, is that a hard no? Or is there, is there wiggle room based on discretion?
I'm muted, sorry. Um, you know, it, it's, it's not an absolute. And, um, you know, in the sense is we have to look at the, the trends that are there. Um, if it's a tenth of a percentage point, we're not going to end something that's successful. Uh, we may have to modify our license agreement to reflect that or may have to extend the term. But it's a target we set that shows what we believe the efficacy of the use. And, um, we're not going to, uh, set something that can't be achieved and it's by mutual agreement. They can choose not to use city property. You know, or receive seating funding and that's a different story, in which case we would consider it as, uh, without that requirement based on term and, uh, based on compliance with the performance standards, the, uh, adopted standards for the, uh, for the use.
Perfect. Thanks. Uh, other comments? Or motions?
I'll make a motion, Mike.
I'll second.
Um, well, I'll, I'll make it, hold on. Um, I am moved that the, um, planning commission, um, recommend, uh, the, or approve the findings of fact, conclusions and recommendations and recommend, uh, the ordinance for approval, uh, to council as drafted or as described in the June 17th staff report.
Second?
I'll second it.
Sorry, Barbara. I knew, I knew you had me.
Okay, we have a motion with the second on the floor. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, so none. The motion passes 6-0. Uh, we'll close the public hearing now on tiny home encampments.